Councilwoman Harris, would you give us our prayer? That forget, the first thing, forgetting the thing? Okay. And then we ask Councilman Crone to put ahead.
Lord, we're coming for you this afternoon. Just want to thank you, Lord, for another day. Thank you for your goodness and all your mercy, God. You've been so good and you've been so merciful, Lord. And Lord, as we be council members, Lord, in this city, God, teach us how to be good leaders, oh God, and look up to you for answers, Lord. Lord, we thank you right now for our mayor and his vision that you have given him, oh God. Lord, we give you glory this afternoon. We give you honor and we give you praise. We thank you for our police department. We thank you for our fire department. We thank you, Lord, for our city, God. And Lord, we bless your holy name this evening, oh God. And everyone that is working in this city to try to make it better, we thank you for those peoples, oh God. Thank you for our sanitation department, oh God, help keep the city clean. Lord, we give you glory this afternoon. We give you honor and we give you praise, God. Continue and give us that love that runs from heart to heart and breast to breast, oh God. While we too loose, tighten us up. If we too, too tight, loosen us up, oh God. Lord, we thank you right now, God. Cover us with your blood, lift us with your love. Lord, let your spirit dwell in us, oh God. Let your word fill us, oh God. Lord, we thank you right now, oh God. As you fill this place with your presence, oh God. Bless the minds of your peoples right now, God. And give us that love that runs from heart to heart and breast to breast, oh God. We give you glory this afternoon. We give you honor and we give you praise because it's in your name, oh God, that we live and move and have our being. And we thank you right now, oh God, because you've been good, oh God. You've been better than good, oh God. And I ask you to look on every reed family that it is. Everyone is sick, oh God. Lord, because you the healer, oh God. Lord, we thank you right now. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen and praise God.
Let's face the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic which is founded on the nation under God and in which there is justice.
Mr. Clerk, will you call the row, please?
Mayor McClintock.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suter. Councilmember Bruce. Councilmember Bruce, he's still out sick. Councilmember Cat.
Here.
Councilmember Crone.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Hudson.
Here.
Councilmember Mohammed.
Present.
Councilmember Monday.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Here.
Councilmember Wheeler.
Here.
We got nine out of ten present. Before we go to our regular business, let me begin by thanking Councilwoman Mohammed for keeping Black History Month and focusing for her efforts to recognize the people in this community that are making a difference. Fifty-four years ago, Dr. Mother DeKeen was in Memphis on behalf of sanitation workers, and he was fighting for livable wages. And I think this council, we did the same thing. A year or so, we gave him a fourteen dollar an hour raise and some got more. So today, Councilwoman, you cannot pick the better department to want to highlight in our public work. So at this time, I'm going to present to you all, Councilwoman Ms. Mohammed.
Thank you very much. It is an honor. I don't really see any of the honorees here, so we're just going to kind of take it a little bit differently. I understand the fire department has a lot of people to honor, so this may be working out for the very best. I do see Reverend Jackson here, but I do have a list of names and the number of years that the sanitation workers and the street department workers have worked. I'm just going to read a little bit here, just take a moment. It says, "The Public Works Department is committed to the maintenance and operation of the city of West Memphis infrastructure. This includes ensuring the safety and quality of streets, sidewalks, traffic signals, streetlights, traffic signs, storm drains, endless sanitation." That includes just the entire Public Works, including the utility department and everything, just not sanitation and, and, and street. Through initiatives such as the Capital Improvement Program, the Public Works Department actively works to improve the city's infrastructure. The mission is to keep the amenities and make West Memphis an attractive location to live and raise a family. And the department works hard to make sure the needs of the residents are met and strive to exceed that goal every day. The department also works closely with federal, state, county, and public utility agencies, where the department is responsible for the management of grant-funded projects and programs. These fine young men and women are totally committed to their job. They work in bad weather, good weather, and everything in between, such as today. They were out there working when we had the ice storm. Many of them were still out there working. Through COVID, they continued to work. And we are so very proud of them because they are most certainly essential workers and deserve all of the recognition they are receiving today and more. Sanitation workers provide a critical public service, essential for our daily lives and the environment. Yet, their working conditions and their environment expose them to the worst consequences of poor sanitation, such as debilitating infections, injuries, social stigma, and even death sometimes, depending on what they come in contact with. So today, we are very, very proud to honor our street department and our public works. Most of them are not here, but I'm going to ask Mr. Reverend Jackson if he will come. Is Reverend, yeah, he's, if he will come. I don't know what happened to the men. Maybe they got distracted from the bad weather or something. So I'm going to ask you if you would come. And as I call these names, I don't, you can't carry out, they're like forty certificates. You can't carry all of them, but I want you to come in lieu of all of your workers. It's Brother Odell and Mr. Odell, is he here? Odell Slaughter? Okay, well, you're the long ranger, come on. And what I'm going to do to kind of cut back on time, you didn't come up here. I'm just going to call their names in the number of years.
Excuse me, Ms. Mohammed, did you want to use this mic and everything?
Oh. If y'all want me to. And there is food. I did order catered food for our sanitation workers, but fire department, I guess, is yours now. Did I go in the ways, that's for sure. And it's delicious with the same young meatball. I'm funny. Is Mr. Charles Hester here? If he's here, you can come up as well. Come on, Mr. Hester, don't be shy. And more may come in. We know how sometimes people get distracted because of different things, and I'm not judging anybody because of that. I'm just so thankful to be able to do all of this for our department. Mr. Jackson and Mr. Hester, on behalf of Mayor Marco McClintock and the West Memphis City Council, we are so proud to honor you today, and we just want to thank you for all of your hard work, for all of the effort that you put in, all of the hours, all of the things that you have to go through. And we're just going to call these names, and there is a whole big box of certificate. Will you just, James, please, grab one and just hold it up to show the audience what it looks like? I love designing certificates, and I type out every last one of them. I was so proud to do it and prayed over every one as I was typing. The first one is Mr. A.C. Owens. He has worked for the city of West Memphis for eight years. Tracy, will you be calculating these numbers as I call them out so you can let us know how many numbers altogether that has been worked? You're the mathematician. Mr. A.C. Owens has worked eight years for the city of West Memphis. Mr. Aaron Morris has worked five years for the city of West Memphis. Mr. Adrian Roberson, one year. Mr. Albert Parker, four years. Mr. Alvin Smith, twelve years. Mr. Andrew Dear, one year. Mr. Arthur Jackson, twenty-one years. Mr. Benny Moore, four years. Ms. Bobby Ann Taylor, she has worked twenty-three years. She's a puller, is that right? Is it? She's a puller, a lady, yay, women power. Calvin Donegan, one year. Mr. Charles Hester, seven years. Mr. Chris Page, thirty years. Mr. Clifton Parker, two years. Mr. Danny Davis, nineteen years. Mr. Darnell Harris, four years. Mr. Derekus Carter, fifteen years. Mr. Devin Turner, one year. Mr. Ernest Trotter, thirty-two years. Mr. Urban King, ten years. Mr. George Philip, three years. Mr. Herbert Wiley, nine years. Mr. Hollis Perkins, sixteen years. Mr. James Clay, nineteen years. Mr. James Jeffries, eight years. Mr. Jimmy Oliver, one year. Mr. Joe Rucker, five years. Mr. John Clariet, two years. Mr. John Ward, five years. Mr. Johnny Yeager, three years. Who is this? Kia? Kia Turner? Ms. Kia Turner, eleven years. Mr. Sidney Stinson, he just started, but he's up and running. Mr. Luther Delaney, ten years. Mr. Michael Bonner, he texted me a few moments ago. He said his father fell and he wouldn't be able, able to be here because of his father being injured. Mr. Odell Slaughter, forty-five years. Mr. Ricky Jabase Brown, five years. Mr. Ricky Brown, three years. Mr. Ricky Rio, twenty years. Ms. Robbie Amos, twenty-three years. Mr. Sam Flowers, fourteen years. Mr. Sammy Smith, sixteen years. Ms. Sheila Pointer, is that right? She's been working for one year. Mr. Stanley Smith, three years. Mr. Tevaris? Tevaris Williams, three years. Mr. Tyrone Smith, he just started, and Mr., I just got another one a few yesterday. If any more of the sanitation and street workers are here, you may come up at this time. I see someone else may be here. If you're here, I got one more. Mr. Jemaria Andrews, he's just started. How many years is that altogether?
Four hundred and twenty-four.
Why? Four, let's give that a hand. I'm very sorry you're just getting here, but everything is working out just fine. So what we're going to do, we're going to give all of these big boxes certificates. There are about forty of them, and we're going to let Mr. Jackson take them, take them to your shop, and if you want to, just give them to each individual since they were not here, and let them know how very, very proud we are. I would get yours, but it's down there somewhere and, and present it to you. Let me at least see if I can find. Please bear with me. And also, Mr. Michael Lamb, he said he wouldn't be here, but Mr. Mr. James Hope requested that we do a certificate for him, and he's been with the city for twenty-three years. Hold on. Mr. Arthur Jackson?
We proudly present this certificate to you on behalf of Mayor Marco McClintock and the city of West Memphis City Council members.
Mr. Hester? We'll find it. What's your name, sir?
Hollis Perkins.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to thank Dorothy for helping frame these. I'd like to thank Tawana Butler and Candace Johnson and Ms. Patricia, everybody help. Mr. Hollis Perkins? There you go. Congratulations. Did you say Carter? Mr. Carter?
Hester.
Charles Hester? This is a lot of work. But I enjoy every moment I did. I'm sorry, Mr. Hester. Either I'm overlooking it or I didn't type it. I'll get it for you, sorry. All right, let's give him a hand. I'm done. Hold on, this moment, I just want to make sure he's not in there. He's not there? Charles Hester? Yeah, he's on here seven years. Mr. Hester, we found him. With the evening time, if I could take a picture with these three and the certificates? That's heavy. Just wait until after.
We're going to move into our council meeting now, so I just want to commend Ms. Lorraine Mohammed for her efforts and doing the sharing. Can I get a motion in a second to add the utility bills and the Southland Race and Charity contributions to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's added. Now with the bid opening, so the utility bills, can I get a motion in a second to refer them back to the utility department?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's referred back. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Were there any corrections to the minutes?
Motion approved and presented.
Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes are approved. We had no old business. Can I get a motion in a second to read R. 1, O. 1, O. 2, O. 3 by title only?
I'd like to make a motion that re, suspend the rules and read O. 1, O. 2, and O. 3 by title only.
And R. 1 and 2.
And R. 1, I'm sorry.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, aye? Opposed?
Mayor, I thought we, in pre-council, we were going to table O. 1.
We still have, we, we in council now. All right, City Attorney?
All right, this R. 1 is a resolution certifying the amounts of liens imposed on certain properties for grass cutting, cleaning, littered debris, and tree limbs, et cetera, contracted by the city of West Memphis pursuant to ordinance number thirteen eighty-five.
Can I get a motion in a second to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mayor, if I may, when I was looking through it earlier, I thought I found an error. Can I bring that back at the next council and simply amend it at that time?
Sure.
Okay.
All right. Then other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Mr. Clerk, would you go R. 1?
Two-two-six-eight. Two-two-six-eight.
The number is two-two-six-eight. City Attorney, on O. 1, I talked with the council about tabled and that, so can I get a motion in a second to a table?
I make a motion to table it.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? It's tabled. O. 2?
Uh, O. 2 is an ordinance to amend ordinance number two-four-four-four regarding retirement benefits for the position of city attorney to approve the benefits as provided in Arkansas Code annotated section twenty-four dash twelve dash one-twenty and for other purposes.
What do you all wish, do you want to read this for a second time?
I would like to suspend the rules and read it for the second time.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? City Attorney?
An ordinance to amend ordinance number two-four-four-four regarding retirement benefits for the position of city attorney to approve the benefits as provided in Arkansas Code annotated section twenty-four dash twelve dash one-twenty and for other purposes.
All right.
Mayor, make a motion to further suspend the rules and place it on its third reading?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? City Attorney?
An ordinance to amend ordinance number two-four-four-four regarding retirement benefits for the position of city attorney to approve the benefits as provided in Arkansas Code annotated section twenty-four dash twelve dash one-twenty.
Hearing red for the third time, can I get a?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye? Well. City Clerk, will you call the row?
Sure. Okay. All in favor, Cat?
Yes.
All in favor, Crone?
Yes.
All in favor, Harris?
Yes.
All in favor, Hope? All in favor, Hope?
Yes.
All in favor, Hudson?
Yes.
All in favor, Mohammed?
Yes.
All in favor, Monday?
Yes.
All in favor, Murray?
Yes.
All in favor, Wheeler?
Yes.
None out of the team, all of the council.
That, that motion is approved. Would you get that ordinance a number?
That ordinance number going to be two-five-nine-eight, twenty-five ninety-eight.
Mayor, if I may, your retirement is set up very similar in some way, is it not? That's some of your service, that's age.
City Attorney, O. 3?
Thank you anyway. An ordinance to amend section two point, I'm sorry, two dash one-seven-one of the West Memphis Municipal Code establishing the salary for the position of city attorney and for other purposes.
Make a motion that we suspend the rules and read that for the second time.
So moved.
All in favor, aye? Opposed?
An ordinance to amend section two dash one-seven-one of the West Memphis Municipal Code establishing the salary for the position of city attorney and for other purposes.
Mayor, may I make a motion to further suspend the rules and place it on its third reading?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Opposed?
An ordinance to amend section two dash one-seven-one of the West Memphis Municipal Code establishing the salary for the position of city attorney and for other purposes.
The motion is taken to approve. In discussion?
Yes, what is your current salary, city attorney?
Current right now?
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's one hundred and change. Uh, this makes it go up three percent to one-oh-three-eight-oh-nine. Uh, I think I'm barely over a hundred right now. Uh, this is the three percent increase that all employees received, and I have to have my salary increased by ordinance, and the last increase I had was a cost of living increase back in twenty eighteen.
Okay, when you say one-oh-three, break that down numerically so everybody can understand what you're talking about.
One-hundred-and-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-nine dollars. It's in the ordinance on section one.
That's what I wanted, everybody, because when you say one-oh-three, we can interpret that as anything, one-hundred thousand. I knew that, but I wanted to make sure it was explained. Right now, I think this should go back before, go back before the budget committee. We, had we discussed anything of this nature? Is it in the budget?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, it's actually in the budget because the retirement that I was supposed to get at six percent was in the budget. So it's actually more than in the budget. It's in the budget twice, really. I've got six thousand in my retirement that there is no retirement account, so that six thousand is in the budget already, uh, but it's only three thousand, it's only going up three thousand. So there's more than enough in the budget based upon the retirement that was no longer available.
Do you want to do it now? Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes. And if this pays, this going to fit for next year?
No, it's, uh, the same as all other employees that started this year.
And it's going to return to January one.
Right.
Anything else? Mr. Clerk, will you call the row?
Okay, all in favor, Bruce Afson. All in favor, Cat?
Yes.
All in favor, Crone?
Yes.
All in favor, Harris?
Yes.
All in favor, Hope?
Yes.
Excuse me? All in favor, Hope?
I, I want to rescind that, no. I didn't, I misunderstood, no.
All in favor, Hudson?
Yes.
All in favor, Mohammed?
Pass.
All in favor, Monday?
Pass.
All in favor, Murray?
Yes.
All in favor, Wheeler?
Yes.
Six yeses. Two passes, one no.
Any one that passed, if they want to vote? All right, when that, that motion passes, uh, will you get that ordinance a number?
The ordinance number would be two-five-nine-nine, twenty-five ninety-nine.
Two-five-nine-nine.
Thank you.
All right. All right, I'm going to ask for the?
I would like to say one thing. It's not that I have anything against the city attorney, and I know he has the degree and everything to earn the money that he earns. We just finished, the reason I did it is because we just finished honoring these sanitation workers and, and street department workers who make so, so little money. And on this day and this, this particular time, for someone who's making this large amount of money and then getting a increase, to me, it is a great insult. That's all I wanted to say. Nothing against you, city attorney.
And I take that as an insult to me, so that's fine, if that's how you feel. But I appreciate everybody voted yes. Thank you.
We have the twenty-twenty-one Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program final statement. Can I get a motion in second to approve that?
So moved.
Second?
Uh, in discussion? All in favor, aye? Opposed? All right, also, I'm going to ask for approval on the twenty-twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program final statement. Can I get a motion in second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? It's approved. Permission request, I ask you all to add to Southland Race and Charity contributions on there. For the record, I just can break them down. What it is, that we normally divide that money between the four boys and girls club, where they normally get, it's a total of forty-eight thousand one-seventy-seven fifty-one. It's a, be a breakdown of twelve thousand and forty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. Disaster relief funds come to a total of four thousand six hundred and four dollars with a big breakdown of one thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. dollars and seventy-four cents. And the city council and the mayor, the total come up to fourteen thousand-three-fifty-eight ninety-three, is a breakdown of one thousand-three-hundred-and-five dollars and thirty-six cents. So can I get a motion? First of all, is those the same way that you want to break those down, like we've been doing? All right, can I get a motion and second to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Oppose? All right. I need permission to sign an agreement with RJN Group for the stormwater mapping.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Oppose? It passes. Also, I need permission to sign an agreement with Pickering Firm for the ten-mile by your trail phase one plat and legal description preparation.
So moved.
Second.
Get a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Oppose? All right. That's approved, thank you. We're gonna go down to community reports. We're gonna start at the fire department?
Yes. Mayor, I'm gonna be very brief, the, for sake of time. The fire commission did meet on February the fifteenth, and these are just a few highlighted entries. Hired three firefighters and one paramedic. Two firefighters are fully certified and were, and were placed in rotation. All vacancies have been filled. We have six firefighters that are in EMT school, and they will be testing on March fourth. Trevor Brewer, Training Officer, will be retiring on March fourth. Upcoming promotional ceremony will be held March eighteenth. There will hopefully be a rededication of the station at Richland-Barton for Operation late March or early April. Station one, these new roof quotes are being obtained. EMS calls to date were two-hundred-and-eighty-one. Collections to date, thirty-two thousand-nine-hundred-twenty-nine, thirty-two thousand-nine-hundred-twenty-nine dollars eighty-four cents. Several grants have been submitted under the Safer Grant Program, and a grant has been submitted for the two new cascade systems and hose dryer. They're looking at revising the sick leave policy to ensure compliance. As well, they are looking at revising the incident action plan, revising the fire marshal's office to improve efficiency. And then lastly, we have, they're creating a grant writing committee within the department, and that concludes the fire commission.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hutchinson. Uh, we've got the police.
I have police. Police commission met February the sixth, twenty-twenty-two. The meeting was called to order at twelve, twelve oh two P M. The meeting was turned over to Chief Bradley, who reports as follows. George Johnson, I T, reports on new radio equipment, which four base, which will serve four bases, sixty-five vehicles, one-hundred-and-ten handheld radios at the cost of one-point-one-million dollars. And it would take up to a year to get this implemented. He hired eight new officers. Six of them are returning officers. All of them are certified. He also proposed to hire three uncertified officers and have them ready for the academy in May. We discussed that higher pay, we need to find a way to become more competitive in salary and wages and benefits so we can keep, retain our officers, because we are losing them to, for higher pay and surrounding counties. We have sixty-nine officers at present, slated for eighty-seven. We had seven graduated, which happened today, I think? Yes. Now, all schools now have SROs in them, and there's also a recruitment team in place to try to help us solve and retain officers. Chief Camer is on board. We want to welcome him. We hired one dispatcher. We now have eleven slated for fifteen. Our police department did a great job during the recent ice storm and was out in full force to help citizens in need. Assistant Chief Bradley also stated that public safety and public service was not an option but a duty. They will work with Ms. Tawana Bailey, Community Outreach Coordinator, and implement more community policing events. He also said that the moral of the department has been, has made a positive turnaround, and officers seem, appear to be happy, glad to be working, and they look forward to seeing this trend continue. The meeting was adjourned at twelve-twenty-three P M. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also just wanted to, I do appreciate the work that all our public services do, and I will begin with each one of these council members, hoping to persuade them to consider a public service sacrifice incentive for our police, fire, and public works department. So, thank you. Uh, utility department?
I also have utility. We met on February tenth, twenty-twenty-two. The West Memphis Utility Commission met in regular session on this date at eight-thirty A M. The first item on their agenda was approval of January minutes. Minutes were approved as written. The second item on their agenda was January safety report. Safety Director Brent Sims reported that there were ninety-eight days since the last recordable incident. Eight-hundred-one, eight-hundred-and-forty-one days since lost time injury, and no recordable injuries for twenty-twenty-two. The third item on their agenda was personnel update. There were two new hires for the month of January. The utility currently has eleven open positions out of seventy-nine budgeted positions. The last item on their agenda was presentations, years of service. This was presented by General Manager Todd Peterson. He recognized five employees for their years of service at West Memphis Utility and presented them with a plaque. The five employees he recognized was David Gocha, fifty years, Denise Bosnick, forty years, Jerry Johnson, thirty years, Jerry Madison, twenty years, and Beth, Beth Henchley, twenty years. And I apologize if I mispronounced any of their names. End of report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mary. There was no other committees that had met? The personnel meet? Go ahead. You, you have the floor.
She just sent it to me. Personnel met on February the ninth. And, let's see, the update from Voya was given by Representative Calvin Reed. Mr. Reed reiterated the importance of contributing to the four-hundred-and-fifty-seven plan where employees can make contributions to their retirement plan. We also received an update from Cigna, Representative Shale Waller, reiterating the Cigna app for benefit information for those employees that may need that information. Dwayne Rose presented the emergency management update. As well, we had, two days were implemented for the inclement weather policy. Public Works did an excellent job of maintaining city buildings and parking lots for safe entry for our employees. We really appreciate you guys for that. The city is looking into a mass communication, I'm sorry, mass communication system for all city employees for emergencies. They're looking into that. And then we will vote on the chair next month. That concludes that report. Thank you so much.
All right.
All right.
Did I overlook, get the parks meet, Councilwoman Mohammed?
No, we didn't meet, but if you have the survey sheet that we passed out, I think last council meeting, you can either turn that in to me or to the city clerk's office, and we'll get it to Mr. Parker.
All right. Any other committee that may have overlooked? Council, City Clerk, and City Judiciary?
What we have here is the green bottom, which is a hundred-and-seventy-eight pages. And what we're gonna do, of course, we'll have a budget meeting on the twenty-fourth, right?
Yes, sir.
So what I probably end up doing is trying to get the finance director, I mean, I have a copy here, it's a hundred-and-seventy-eight pages, and perhaps by the next council meeting, you all have this.
Thank you. All right, and the next thing we're gonna, is to do that to complete the committee reports?
Airport? I don't have, do you have anything?
Not on airport, no. I'm not on the commission.
Okay. That completes our committee reports. We have appointments. I know there was much discussion about Mr. Bill Morris. Do we have a opening, or we don't, or what, what are we, what are we at with this?
Mayor, if you want to, we can table this and clarify the issue before the next meeting. I'll get an updated report on all appointments. I've already got a lot of it completed, but since there seems to be a disagreement, I'll get it finished up, e-mailed out to everybody.
Can I get a motion to table it?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Oppose? It's tabled until next, the next council meeting. Will that be enough time to get this information?
Yes, I will. Yeah, I'll double check, make sure I haven't mistaken anywhere, but I will, I'll have to research a few sets of minutes, so. Just like I've been, she's been accessing those, maybe if we can go back and double check, make sure it's accurate.
Okay.
Mayor, do we, do we work with this, this candidate bef, before we add this?
Well, it would be, in two weeks, if we have a, let's say, if we have a spot open on the airport commission, must have Bill Morris would be the first person that you all would decide on. And if he's voted down, then you would go to the other gentleman that Mr. Hope presented.
Okay.
All right.
Let me ask, let me ask a question real quick. Councilman Kat, who, who are the two open spots? Do you remember?
Since I'm going by memory, goodness knows, it's slipping as I get older. I remember perfectly, it was Dr. Bryant and previous House Representatives, Marvin Steele, were the two, but I need to verify that.
Okay.
And you are correct, because I was liaison, and that is accurate.
Ma'am?
You are accurate. That's correct. Dr. Bryant and, and Representative, Mr. Steele.
We'll just, we'll go back and document everything, so there won't be any misunderstandings, and then we'll make sure it's maintained on a regular basis from there.
All right, we move away from appointments. We're gonna go to a presentation. I'm gonna ask Chief Eather, when he comes to the mic, have a special presentation that he want to present for his man.
Good evening, everyone. Today, the West Memphis Fire Department is honoring several firefighters that has gone above and beyond the call of duty. I think so often, we take for granted the sacrifice that these men and women make, putting their lives on the line every day to help keep us safe. So let's just take a moment and give them a round of applause to show them how much we appreciate them. Because they do such a wonderful job. There are so many great things going on at the West Memphis Fire Department. I could name several, but time would not permit. But one of the things I am most excited about in particular is the firefighter, fire crew, and staff member of the year award. This administration wanted to recognize personnel that has given, displayed outstanding performance in twenty-twenty-one. The firefighter crew of the year award goes to Private Nick Couples and Captain Kevin Cat. You step forward, please. These two gentlemen have earned the fire crew of the year award. The city and fire department of West Memphis hereby recognize the following as the West Memphis Fire Department Fire Crew of the Year Award twenty-twenty-one for meritorious actions under fire conditions. Captain Kevin Cat, Ladder Company One, firefighter Nickel Couples, Engine Company Three, for actions taken to locate and remove a victim under heavy smoke and fire conditions while completing fire suppressions and primary search activities at a two-story multiple family dwelling with heavy smoke and fire showing from the rear of the structure, Captain Cat, firefighter Couples extinguished the fire, located the victim in a bedroom. The victim was recovered and removed by Officer One-One and Three-Three and placed in the emeralds. Presented this day, February the seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two. Congratulations, Captain Cat, Private Couples. You want to say a word, Captain?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Hey, yeah, this is great. It really is. It's an honor. But this is, this is a team effort, really, from, from everybody that was there. Private Logan Ritchie was in there with us also. He, just as deserving, but thank you, Chief. This is, this is an honor for both of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Congratulations, Private Couples. Our next award that will be given out is for firefighter of the year. It goes to Captain Zachary Bailey. If you come forward, Mr. Captain Bailey. Captain. Firefighter Year. The city and fire department of West Memphis hereby recognize the following as the West Memphis Fire Department Firefighter Year twenty-twenty-one for outstanding contributions to the department. Captain Zachary Bailey, for his commitment as a company officer to train his crew, Engine Company Two-B, as well as his continual performance beyond his assigned shift days to assist with fire department-wide live fire training and the development of standpipe in high-rise tactics. Presented this day, February the seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, I present you firefighter year award, Captain Bailey. Congratulations. Our next award goes to the staff member of the year award. This was a real hard choice, because I can make a case for every last one of my staff members, but we can only have one a year. So I think this person here is well-deserving. Goes to Chief Patricia Roberts. Congratulations, Chief. The city of West Memphis and the West Memphis Fire Department hereby recognize the following as the year, department staff member of the year, Chief Roberts. This award is for you going above and beyond the description of your job duties at hand. Your dedication and work ethic makes you without a doubt deserving of being the employee staff member of the year. Congratulations, Division Chief Patricia Roberts. Presented this day, February the seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two. Congratulations, Chief. Would you like to say a few words, Chief?
Sure. I never miss an opportunity to say something. I just, first off, I'd like to say thank you to my family for always being there for me. I'd like to say thank you to my chief, Ely, my assistant chief, Chief Clay. This is a great opportunity. Anytime I get recognition, and also, just to, you know, like he said, our staff is on one accord, and we're trying to move the fire department together, you know, as a team, and I say thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief Roberts. As everyone is aware, there was a catastrophic tornado F-two that hit the Truman Fire Department. I had a call from Lieutenant May. He's a lieutenant at the Truman Fire Department, and I'll tell you, the story goes like this. On December the tenth, twenty-twenty-one, I received a call from Lieutenant May of the Truman Fire Department requesting mutual aid. He stated that- He stated that a tornado had hit the city of Truman, Arkansas, taking out their fire station, a nursing home, several houses were on fire, people were trapped in houses, people not accounted for, hazardous gases being released. He began to request for as many firefighters as possible to respond to the city of Truman. At this time, I called Mayor McClennan, advising him of the request for mutual aid. He gave the order to have dispatch do a total recall to all of the off-duty firefighters and have them respond to assist the Truman Fire Department. Today, we are going to honor and recognize the firefighters that were able to respond and help mitigate that catastrophic F2 tornado. Lieutenant May, would you step forward? Lieutenant May is a firefighter for West Memphis, he's also a firefighter for Truman. This was the lieutenant that summons the call for assistance.
Thank you, Chief. I don't think the majority of Americans realize just how close we are to something catastrophic happening at home, and how few responders we have available at any one time. The American Fire Service is built on a family feeling, we call it a brotherhood and a sisterhood, and it relies on mutual aid, where we back each other up whenever we need. The Truman Fire Department had fulfilled that role many times from 2020 until December 10th of 2021. We sent personnel to three tornado sites in that year and a half, and provided mutual aid to communities that were struck, Jonesboro, Harrisburg, and then the night of December 10th to Monette, right before we were struck. So in the evening time of December 10th, we were struck by the F2 tornado. Nick, can, can you pull up the city map of Truman, please? You could not make a dartboard bullseye hit any better than what hit the city that evening. It hit the direct center of the city, including fire station one, it started hitting a, by hitting a nursing home, the fire station, a very large agricultural chemical storage facility, which was leaking chemicals into our drainage system and our waterways, and then into a housing area that is mostly based on rental houses that was just demolished and leaking natural gas. Immediately after the tornado passed, I knew we were overwhelmed. Our radio system was torn up, we relied on one full-time firefighter that evening and the rest of us coming in off-duty and volunteer. So my first call was to who I knew I wanted to come and help, my family, friends and neighbors first, and it was the firefighters here at the West Memphis Fire Department. I know the men and women here, I trust them with my life, and they were the first call. So I called Chief Ely immediately after the tornado passed and found the first hazmat incident up on the highway, which happened to be a tractor trailer that was leaking compressed natural gas on oncoming traffic. And I knew we had hazmat problems right off the bat. At that time, the cell system was a little bit messed up, as you can imagine. I went on to a neighborhood in the northeast quadrant of the city, was under some debris, and Chief called back. My wife happened to be with me, she answered the phone, said, hey, what do I need to tell Chief Ely that we need? And I said, we really need anybody that can be sent. Said, we have technical rescue needs, and we have hazmat needs, and we cannot meet them. No hesitation from the city, and no hesitation from the men that we're gonna call up in a minute to come in off-duty from their homes to come help serve not just the folks here, but neighbors in need in the county next door. So I bring to you, thanks from our fire chief, Ravis Kemper, and from our city mayor, Barbara Llewellyn. They couldn't be here today, FEMA has its own timeline, today happens to be a day they're discussing and finalizing plans on rebuilding the fire station, you saw it's matched up it was, but they send their thanks, as do all of us that are on the Truman Fire Department, to all of you that came and helped that night. I have never in twenty-some years in the fire service been on the receiving end of the cavalry, and by God, when I saw these faces show up and I knew who was there, phew, 100% relieved. So as we called the names, again, thank you, and from the city of Truman, thank you all for coming and helping us.
Thank you, Lieutenant May. We're gonna call up the firefighters by name, if you would, so that we can move this thing along, we'll just call them up, and after every name has been called, we just give everybody a round of applause, so that we can kind of wrap things up and move to our conclusion. This certificate is proudly presented to the firefighters in response to a mutual aid request for hazardous material, technical rescue assistance in Truman, Arkansas, following that city being struck by F2 tornado. But it recognizes the city of West Memphis Fire Department, that you are awarded this certificate of merit on this February 3rd, 2022. Firefighter Hope, firefighter Bigness, firefighter Thornton, firefighter Couples, firefighter Pons, firefighter Spears, firefighter Ritchie, firefighter Laurent, Lieutenant Taylor, Lieutenant Allenworth, Lieutenant Johnson, Captain Bailey, Captain Gill, Captain Cat, Captain Benninger, and Captain Harrison. Will you guys step forward, please, and receive your awards? If you would, stand up here, you guys got your certificates, we wanna take a group picture right quick. Mayor, would you mind coming over, getting a picture with the fellas?
I personally want to say to our fire department, our police department, and our public works department, it's important that we show them the appreciation that they're deserving. Every employer that comes in to work for the city does an incredible job, and when I see fires and you see people running out of homes, the firemen are running in. When you see shootings, the police are trying to get there when people are trying to get away. In this cold ice, you had sanitation workers out picking up our filthy trash, and we had street department out panning our ice and salt down to make sure that they melt the snow. And it's so important to me, because when I sit here sometimes and hear individuals making political pull, plots up here about the people that work for the city, that's So please, let's respect and give a meaning to women, the credit and appreciation they are due. Anyone having announcements? The police department did their graduation, and they had nine individuals that graduated, seven of them from West, seven of them from West Memphis, we had two of them that was from Jericho, they trained with us as well, and believe it or not, several of the seven that we had were West Memphians, homegrown young men from our city. So I definitely appreciate them as well. Citizen requests, Roger Brown had to reschedule due to the weather, Ms. Sula didn't have to be on the agenda. We have Ms. Marilyn Dancy, would you come forward, ma'am? We normally give five minutes, give your name and your address, please.
Good evening. I'm here, I come from Shady Grove, and for some of you that may not know, it's west of West Memphis. After you pass Airport Road, there's an eighteen-wheeler business, ATV, car lot, mechanic shop, and a private club. And Shady Grove has just two streets there, Lincoln and Shady Grove. And we're still, we have been annexed into West Memphis, however, we still carry the mayor and address. Those businesses, we have businesses up there, they have pretty much overran the community. Like I said, it's only two streets, and the city has come in and start doing code enforcement and all of that. Well, I have a home that was there, I had that home boarded up, it was not a nuisance, the land was taken care of, grass was not overgrown, but however, the city of West Memphis decided they was gonna demolish that house. And it should not have been demolished, and I just wanna know why that house was demolished.
Well, sure, I can answer that question for you, it's mayor, what I've been instructed to do was to clean up the city of West Memphis and turn out all, let me finish, ma'am, please, to turn out all the dilapidated houses, and what we did, we sent you out a notice to be the, to reply back to the notice within thirty days, and if you would have called, if you would have called, it was, ma'am, the council approved this over a month ago, and within that month, they approved it, whatever days you was given, only thing you had to do was call in and say, hey, I will fix the house and start doing some repairs. At this time, it's time to clean up dilapidations within our community, we cannot continue to allow dilapidated homes just to be, because we hoping to be a new, brand-new homes here. So at that time, we came down, and we had this council approve it over a month ago, but even before the month ago, the house has been unlivable and dilapidated for the longer, and if you wanted it approved or taken off the list, only thing you had to do was call within those ten days and say, I plan to do some type of work to that home to get it where it needs to be, and we would have taken off the list, because we do that on several homes, a malfact on this current list, it was done that way. And the house met the dilapidation standards, because we went through that protocol, so you may not think that it was dilapidable, but it was, and the city council here approved it.
The city council don't have the authority to classify a house dilapidated, that house was boarded up. I could see if it was rundown, you have houses from 35th Street to Rich Road, I looked at them, they're torn down, they're open for nuisance or whatever, my house was not considered a nuisance, I boarded the house up to repair the home. Now I can see if it was open, it was laying on the ground and all of that, but that home was not unreparable. Now, I was sick during those ten days, so I couldn't respond, I have a lot of issues that's going on, I didn't want to just address it, and then for ten days, for you to say I had ten days to address the issue, the pandemic's still going on, we still have lives going on, and from the code that you all have, you have thirty days, I didn't get the thirty days. You already out there, the city took their city workers to tear the house down. That should not have happened, that house was not unreparable, and you don't have the qualifications to say it was, just like I can't go around and point out houses that are not or unreparable.
Well, ma'am, let me say this, I did not go around like I had the classification, but it is people here that has the classification, we have those people, we have inspectors that went out and looked at every property, put a sign on their doors, so there was people that was qualified that said that that house was done and that, but you said that you had ten days, you say you were sick, and I understand at that time, but let's go back for two years, because how long has the house been empty and dilapidated?
I'm not sure, and it's not dilapidated, like I said, I had work that was doing on the house, I could not finish it at that time, I had the house boarded up. I did what I thought was right as a homeowner or a property owner. Now, there are many houses, like I said, from 31st Street on up. Now, why I said, I call Shady Grove the hidden community, because nobody goes out there, nobody's doing any work out there, we've been promised sidewalks since 1980s, and still have not been done, but I know that y'all have money for sidewalks, but y'all never thought about Shady Grove to do.
Well, let me, let me, let me, let me, let me speak, because I want you to speak and you speak as well. What happened in 1998, I was not here, but I have met with people within your community since I've been mayor, and I can name them, and they talked about lots being overgrown, that we sent our own grass cutting department out there to cut, to talk about houses out there that are dilapidated, and we went through the process and we got those homes torn down. Now, since you say that, I'm happy to announce that the city of West Memphis, under my administration, have now torn down 167 houses, so it's not just in Shady Grove, it's all through the city, and if you go to the trailer park that's right on, off 25th Walk and inside Henry, wherever they're tearing down dilapidated homes too. So it's not just your community, ma'am, and that's all I'm saying.
I'm not concerned about any other community, I'm concerned about 124 Shady Grove, the house was boarded up, it was secure, nobody can go in and out, the property was clean, the house was not dilapidated, it was not dilapidated, so it was repairable, that's what I'm trying to get you to understand.
I totally understand you, but what I'm saying is, I would have loved to have had this conversation before the house was torn down, when I was in the community, I was in the community, and if you would have got contacted us before we got to that point, then we would have had a better conversation, we probably could have saved the house for you, if you felt that, and you was gonna show this city some type of improvement.
I secured the house, that was a part of my responsibility, I secured the house, I boarded it up. That was my responsibility as a homeowner, as a property owner, there are thousands, hundreds of houses in West Memphis.
And if I had the opportunity to say, I'm gonna tear down every one of them.
And I'm still saying that Shady Grove is a hidden community, you can't see it, it wasn't like it was open, but like, even if you thought it was, there are houses, I'm sure in the community that you live in, that are, you get out of your house, out of your car, go in, ride down the street, that need repaired. No one, I'm saying, take care of your own community around that community first, but like I still say, that house was not unreparable.
I understand that, but I wanna tell, I wanna tell you one thing, Shady Grove is not hidden, Shady Grove is West Memphis. Shady Grove is represented by Councilman Cat and Councilman Hope. Now, for me, well, I, I can't speak on that department, but they are, it is, hold on, hold on, Ms. Mohammed, it is West Memphis, and I have been out there and I can, and I went picked them on the spot, but several individuals have made these complaints, I'm not saying about your house, but saying about the streets, they saying about grass, they saying about homes, and what I went in there and done was part of, I'll see the procedure, and we got there taken care of, and I wish that you would have talked to me before it happened, because at this point, it's pretty much like, what do you want me to do?
You can pay to repair the, to put it back up, it was not, it was not unreparable.
If that's the case, I'd be repairing and building new houses all over the city.
All I'm saying is, the house is not, no, I don't live there, it doesn't matter, I have houses there, my mom and dad live there, so I know the community, I go there every day.
Well, let me ask one more question, because I don't wanna be like, we going back and forth.
I know.
Why, why, why was in the house together?
Thank you for listening, and I appreciate it.
Why was in the house together? Thank you. Ms. Mohammed?
I was just going to ask.
Well, ma'am, like I told you, we trying to tear down every dilapidated property, and this, no, thank you, because this is my meeting, thank you.
I was just gonna ask for the attorney if he has an opinion on what is going on, that you can address the young lady to give her some kind of resolve.
No, I guess, this, this, this the head for mayor and all that race right now.
No, I mean, I don't have any knowledge of this, it's gone through the procedure, as far as I know, that we normally go through, and, and that's the resolve, so, I don't have any specific knowledge.
Well, is there anything else that we wanna hear? I thank you all. Can I get a motion, the secretary adjourn?
Can move.
And I'd like to say there's, there's food outside for anyone who wants to sit, have yourself.
Okay.